Welcome to the November 8, 2018, regular meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman. Please join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson?
Present.
Alderman Beatty?
Present.
Alderman Fortunati?
Do you would like to be excused, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Gaedner?
Here.
Alderman Gurman?
Here.
Alderman Ginatazio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Grant?
Here.
Alderman Hardeman?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Sutton?
Here.
Alderman Tranquilli?
Here.
Alderman Becarelli?
Here.
Alderman Vitale? 14 present, Mr. Chairman.
14 present, we do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Alderman. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann Berman, and I live at 77 Pelham Street. And I just wanted to speak this evening on two bipartisan issues. And I wanted to also congratulate Karen Fortunati for her successful Green Halloween. There was a great turnout, and we were able to give away over 100 bags stuffed with the information on recycling. And that's one of the things I wanted to speak about, is recycling and global warming. But on the recycling part, I wanted to -- people don't understand still that they are not supposed to put plastic bags or fabrics in the recycling bin. Now, it can cause a great deal of harm if they do this because it gets stuck in the machines when it goes to the recycling center, and they have to stop the mechanics go and try to untangle a mess. And when so doing, it puts the workers at risk because they have to go in and untangle it, and sometimes the machinery wants to start. So it's putting their lives at risk. So that's why I want to make a big point about the recycling of plastic bags and fabrics. Now, the other thing that I wanted to say was that on November the 10th, this Saturday coming, we have a climate change talk or a discussion, and we are very fortunate to have two great people to speak. One is Julian Barrett, and she comes from the state of Connecticut University. And she really is very familiar with what's happening along the coastline of Connecticut. And so the talk will be focused on Milford. What we can do, and also discussion on how the public can participate and should be able to be participating in the measures that we can take to protect our coastline. So it will be at 2:00 on Saturday, this Saturday coming, at the library. The ECC and the library are co-sponsoring. We are in partners. So I hope that the message gets across. I mean, the reason I don't like talking on TV, but I hope that the message gets out because it's not always in the papers.
Anyone else wishing to address the board can do so at this time? Seeing none, we'll open on the agenda item number three. Alderman Becarelli, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman held on October 1, 2018.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Becarelli, agenda item number four, consideration of minutes. There is no organization meeting at this time. So we're open on the agenda number five, Chairman's report. I'd like to take this time to congratulate the Alderman Secretary, Kathy Kennedy, for the -- her victory on Tuesday. And my regrets go to Alderman Beatty, who did a fantastic job. I'm sorry that only one could win. Otherwise, there should have been a tie. Also, I'd like to remind everyone, this coming Sunday is Veterans Day, and the parade is going to be stepping off at the Parsons parking lot at 2:00 p.m. And also, the wreath laying ceremony is going to be at 10:45 a.m. in front of City Hall. And all are welcome. And I hope you get a very good turnout of the Veterans Day parade. Thank you, everyone. That's all I have. Yes, Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale, for recognizing that.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, good evening. I appreciate the good work of this Board. I congratulate Alderman Chairman Vitale for being selected as this year's 2018 Veterans Day Grand Marshal, and thank all of our veterans, including Alderman Hardeman, for their service and sacrifice. But tonight, I do have some special presentations. So in addition to those items on the agenda, items 8A through 8C, which, as always, I respectfully request your consideration and action, I do want to point out some celebratory things, including Peter Ardisi in the Finance Department, kudos again. Milford just won out for bond issuance. And Fitch, the nation's premier bond rating agency, has once again designated the city of Milford as a AAA-rated community for our bonding. So that is good news for the city. It means that we experience low interest rates, the lowest interest rates, because we have the highest possible bond rating allowable for cities and towns. So kudos to Peter Ardisi and our finance folks. I do want to follow up on what Chairman Vitale said. A great big thank you to all of those people, all of the candidates who stepped up to make our democracy a better place, whether you won, whether you lost. Just so much time, so much energy is spent campaigning, meeting voters, meeting residents, making sure that our community moves forward. And earlier this week, we had elections, not just in Milford, but across the nation, at the local level, at the state level, for national office. And it's how this great country continues to be, a great country, is through the efforts, whether they be for volunteer positions that we have here locally, or for state positions, or for positions in our U.S. Congress. The folks who volunteered to put themselves out there and campaign, we owe them the highest debt of gratitude. So a great big thank you to Ellen Beatty and to Kathy Kennedy. Kathy, we look forward to working with you in other capacities into the future, but to everybody who stepped up to campaign. So impressive. I also want to mention that the city of Milford was one of the 17 communities to receive the Sustainable CT designation. We were awarded this last week at a state convention for the good work that many, many organizations in this community engage in. We are trying to reduce our carbon footprint in all we do, trying to make sure that our community lasts into the future. So all of the good work that organizations like the Environmental Concerns Coalition, and the Energy Advisory Council, and the Conservation Commission, and really the Arts Council, everything that this community does to make Milford a better place was recognized in the Sustainable CT awards. The folks that coordinated this for us, as you know, were Steve Johnson and Claire Kramer earlier this year, so a great big thank you to them as well. And we will have this prominently on display somewhere in City Hall, not sure where. And last but not least, I do have a very special presentation. As you know, from time to time, there are people, organizations, teams, that are often recognized for bringing great pride to this city. And Representative Kim Rose had planned to recognize one of those special individuals here tonight. Fortunately, unfortunately, she got called to Hartford for state business and has asked me to present a state citation on behalf of the Connecticut General Assembly delegation. And one of my good friends, Lila Hoxey, I would like to invite forward. Lila is a sixth grader at West Shore Middle School, but already she is a published author. And she has recently written a book entitled "Out with the Old, In with the New." And I do have a presentation and a citation from the General Assembly which reads, and it's introduced by Representative Kim Rose, Senator Gail Sossberg, Representative Pam Stineski, and Representative Charles Ferraro. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulation to Lila Hoxey in recognition of publishing a children's book entitled "Out with the Old, In with the New." Lila, you have worked extremely hard for many hours on this book. At only 11 years old, you are now a published author and illustrator. You will help many young readers who are learning to make new friends and maintain existing friendships. Beyond this accomplishment, you have generously donated proceeds of your work to the Milford Animal Shelter. Lila, you have demonstrated extraordinary qualities of perseverance, dedication, and selflessness. Milford is lucky to have you, and we wish you continued success in your future endeavors. And it's signed by the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate, and the Secretary of State. Lila, congratulations. Well done. You make Milford proud.
Very much appreciated. We'll open up under the agenda item number seven, unfinished business. Alderman Becarelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request per the attached recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board dated October 19, 2018, for a construction easement on property located at Flax Mill Road, MAP 120, Block 906, Parcel 2B, in favor of the state of Connecticut, and to authorize the mayor and city attorney's office to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said easement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I guess, for purposes of consistency or accuracy, I should say, I was told that this is Flax Mill Lane, not road. So I guess that would have to be corrected. But my question does come up in regards to the bridge, the end result. And I've crossed that bridge for many, many years, and it's a very interesting part of North Milford there. It's very rustic, and it has a very nice New England field stone. So my question is, are we -- is the expectation that it will continue to be New England field stone on that bridge once it's reconstructed?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Ginatazio. Again, our Public Works Director is here. This is a bridge that is a grant-funded project. It's an 80/20 split, so the city of Milford is going to be receiving 80% reimbursement from the state Connecticut DOT. They have already paid 100% for the design of the bridge. In terms of the look, in terms of the aesthetic of the bridge, we have requested that that same New England colonial character of the stones remain. We've said that a couple times. We've put that in a couple of different correspondences. If you remember, this project goes all the way back to 2014, when this Board formally approved the grant application in order to apply for the bridge program. So we've made this request at least for the last four years now, and the expectation is yes. We do have the designs. Our Public Works Director will be able to share those with you, maybe not tonight, but offline, if you want to see the actual design work for that bridge.
Thank you. Just a follow-up. Do we have a timeframe of how long this project will take until completion?
Mr. Chair, I'll invite the Public Works Director up for specifics. It's my expectation that during our normal February bond authorization, we will go out to secure funding for this. Again, this is one of those grant-funded projects where we receive 80% reimbursement, but we are required to pay for the entire amount upfront, and we get reimbursement checks during the progress of the construction. The notes that I have right here, the expectation is that next fall, October of 2019, the project, the construction portion of the project is scheduled to commence, and it should be completed in spring of 2020.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale?
Mr. Chair, the numbers that we've been looking at so far, approximately $2.7 million for the entire project, so 20% would be the responsibility of the city.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vitale, could you please use either Alderman Gurman's or Alderman Grant's microphone? Your voice is not being picked up on the microphone. We've got it. But from here on in, thank you. Alderman Becarelli, agenda item eight, moving on to new business.
Eight C? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request per the attached recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board dated October 19, 2018, for the acceptance of an easement from the Van Gogh Family Revocable Trust for property located at 123 Cherry Street, and to authorize the mayor and city attorney's office to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said easement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the mayor or the Public Works Director. I just wanted, as a matter of record, to ask how this came about. Very pleased that we're in a position where we're going to provide additional turning space at the intersection of Cherry and Gulf. It's most welcome. When there was a development that was constructed recently in two phases, I was hoping for action to be taken to ensure that if one were traveling down Gulf, you'd be able to get into a dedicated turn lane to turn onto Cherry. So again, it's most welcome, and I wondered what the genesis was for this. Mr. Salee?
Sure, Alderman Anderson. So as you referenced the other property, when they came before us, we asked them to push back the building, or not the building, but the sidewalk a little bit, so we'd have a true dedicated turning lane, with the expectation that the property where the bank is, and it's held in a irrevocable trust, we approached the property owners and asked them for an easement. So we're going to be pushing back that sidewalk a number of feet, so that we can have a dedicated turning signal, and it will be able, so it won't back up as much on Cherry Street, I'm sorry, on Gulf Street. This is the intersection, so people know where Gulf goes into Cherry, and it's going to be a safer turning radius, both coming in and going out of that intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Salee. It's definitely one of the best improvements that we've made, so I look forward to having it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Ginatazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Director Salee. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Salee, we're pushing back the existing sidewalk that's already there. Is that correct? There is an existing sidewalk on the corner of Gulf and Cherry?
Yes, we're going to push it back. There's also a telephone pole that we're going to rework, potentially either putting it behind the sidewalk, or putting it across the street and running the telephone line and other things underground, so that the telephone pole won't be an obstruction coming down towards Cherry Street from Gulf.
So on this map that's in our packet, this is the rendering of the final, the completed project? Because it doesn't look like the sidewalk's pushed back to me, based on this rendering. I don't know if you saw this or not.
I haven't seen the smaller plan, but I can tell you that it has been pushed back.
Okay.
Approximately three and a half feet.
All right. In order to widen the road, to make it a better turn lane?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mr. Salee or Mayor Blake. Did the city incur any costs in obtaining the rights to this easement?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Sutton, it is my review of this, that the property owner provided us the easement without cost. It's a benefit to the property owner also, because it makes it easier for people going exit and entering the bank. It's a good project for everybody involved.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salee. Alderman Becarelli, agenda item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request per the attached recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board dated October 19, 2018, for reciprocal easements between the city of Milford and Lewis Paul LLC for property located at 25 River Street and 15-23 River Street, and to authorize the mayor and the city attorney's office to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said easement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to City Attorney. Good evening. Can you just give us a little background of what prompted this? Because I know that we had discussions prior in regards to the patio, and I know that this is coming after the fact, so if you can just give us a little background, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alderman Ginatazio. As you remember, you may remember, in November of 2017, this Board approved a lease with Mr. Fernandez for the patio. In the course of designing, constructing the patio, Mr. Fernandez discovered and brought to my attention that there is a, approximately a 40-inch-wide, almost knee-high foundation wall, that not only abuts his property, because he owns the adjacent property, but encroaches. That wall, we believe, was constructed and put in when the city took down the building where the parquet exists, as a means to support 25 River Street. So in the course of designing the patio, Mr. Fernandez needs to access support with the 40-inch foundation wall. We also need to clear up the fact that we encroach his property by, let's see, I think 22 inches, or something like that. And we're encroaching on his property, so it's a, they're mutual easements, clearing up the fact that we're on his property and asking this Board for permission to go on our property, i.e. the wall that exists now.
Just a follow-up, Mr. Chairman, through you. So the wall is going to stay? The wall's not being removed? It's going to be attached to the patio?
The wall is not being removed. We went down that road, it's just not practical or feasible, because the wall provides support for the building. This is a major structural impairment, if you remember, from the JML Fields, when they put the fence. And it was my office's opinion that when they put the sleeves in for the fence, that that was a major structural alteration to publicly-owned property. The wall, at least part of it, we own. So there will be approval sought to use the wall and property to build the patio and other improvements, and they need to access that, the wall.
Okay. So are we incurring any liability by allowing them to attach to the wall, to our part of the wall?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Becarelli, agenda item nine, there is no new business, so moving on to agenda item number 10. Mr. Alderman Becarelli, 10A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget memo transfers, number three, and number four, funds 10, FY '19.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Becarelli, agenda item number 11, moving on to refunds.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $46,970.95.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 12, reports of standing committees. Are there any? Alderman Veccharelli, just one more on the 11B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the suspense list in the amount of $509,750.76.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 12, reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees? Seeing none, moving on to agenda item number 13. Are there any reports of any special committees? Seeing there's none, the next item on our agenda is executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss 14A, consideration of settlement of J&amp;J Milford LLC versus City of Milford regarding 580 Birchport Avenue. 14B, consideration of settlement of OGL Master LLC versus City of Milford regarding 221 Old Gate Lane. 14C, consideration of settlement of Milford Bank, AKA The Milford Bank, versus City of Milford regarding 9 Depot Street, 33 Broad Street, and 119 High Street. 14B, consideration of settlement of MFG Blom LLC versus City of Milford regarding 200 Research Drive. 14D, consideration of settlement of 171 Broad Street versus City of Milford regarding 171 Broad Street. 14E, consideration of settlement of LNS III LLC versus City of Milford regarding 241 Boston Post Road. 14F, consideration of settlement of LM Cherry Street LLC versus City of Milford regarding 202 Cherry Street. 14G, consideration of settlement of 1639 LLC versus City of Milford regarding 247 Broad Street. 14H, consideration of settlement of Alliance Energy LLC versus City of Milford regarding 1354 Boston Post Road. Joining us in executive session for items 14A through 14H will be the mayor, Ben Blake, assessor Dan Thomas, and our city attorney, John Bertram. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note of clarification. It's actually 14A through 14I. My office actually mislabeled some of the numbering of these different items, but you indeed did read each item correctly, 14A through 14I, so we should be all set. But again, there are 14A through 14I in terms of the consideration for executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Alderman Giannatasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For purposes of disclosure, I am going to recuse myself from 14C on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Giannatasio. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The motion made and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor? Opposed? We're in executive session. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of J&amp;J Milford LLC versus City of Milford regarding 580 Birchport Ave., in accordance with recommendations of the city attorney, the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, 14B.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of OGL Master LLC versus City of Milford regarding 221 Old Gate Lane, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, 14C.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Milford Bank, AKA The Milford Bank, versus City of Milford, regards to 9 Depot Street, 33 Broad Street, and 119 High Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Giannatasio?
Mr. Chairman, just for point of clarification, this is the item that I will be recusing myself. I'm an incorporator on The Milford Bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Giannatasio. Motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli? Oh, one reclusive, I'm sorry. One recused himself because he's on the, some kind of board. Thank you for the reminder. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of MFG Blom LLC versus City of Milford, regards to 200 Research Drive, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of 171 Broad Street LLC versus the City of Milford, in regards to 171 Broad Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, 14E.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of LNS III LLC versus City of Milford, regards to 241 Boston Post Road, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item 14F.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of LM Cherry Street LLC versus City of Milford, regards 202 Cherry Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, 14H.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of 1639 LLC versus City of Milford, in regards to 247 Broad Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
That's what I asked you. That's I.
That's I. I thought that was H. Excuse me. We have one more. My mind is labeled wrong, so it's under 14I. Alderman Veccharelli, last one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Alliance Energy LLC versus City of Milford, in regards to 1354 Boston Post Road, in accordance with recommendations of the city attorney and the city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a second? Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.